Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Pennsylvania County Planning Commission July the 2019 meeting. Roll call. Ms. Meese.
Present.
Ms. Henderson.
Present.
Mr. Haymore.
Present.
Dr. Miller. Mr. Stowe.
Present.
Mr. Horn.
Present.
Mr. Dudley.
Present.
And myself. Let the record show seven present, one absent. Dr. Miller. Will everyone please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. All citizens of the United States will join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of my country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. No one has signed up. Does anyone wish to address the commissioners on anything other than what's on the agenda? Here none. We'll move on. The approval of the agenda. A motion, please.
I make a motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Haymore to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, raise your right hand. The motion's passed. Seven for, one absent. Approval of the minutes, June 4th, 2019. Motion, please.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Horn, second by Mr. Stowe to approve the amendments as presented in our package. All in favor, raise your right hand. The motion's passed. Seven for, I mean, seven present, one absent. The chairman's report. You all got emails, and I gave copies to Ms. Meese and Mr. Stowe from the letter from the Old Dominion Agricultural where the foundation is neutral on the solar energy. So, I guess that will relieve our thing. At this time, I'd like to recognize Pennsylvania County Sheriff's Department because this week they got recertified by the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standard Commission, and they are one of the sixteen out of the whole state of Virginia of 123 sheriffs. So, I certainly think we ought to recognize them and thank them for the excellent work that they do because when you come in here, they're the first you see. When you leave, they're the last, and we appreciate what they do to protect us and serve us 24 hours a day. Oh, Mr. Dudley, I want to congratulate you. See, where are you going to be running for the supervisor, unopposed, and standing river district? So, I guess we'll be having your face until December, and then you'll be moving on to higher shares.
That's right.
And the first thing we want to do is a pay raise. So, just keep that in mind.
Might want to hold the applause, I promise you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And also, don't want to down miss it, but I want to recognize Ms. Stowe, Mr. Stowe's boss, and we're certainly glad to have you with us tonight, Ms. Stowe, and can always come and keep him in order. Thank you. And Mr. Griffith, we're honored to have him. He represents, he's only a member of the BCA Board, and he's here tonight, and we want to certainly welcome him to the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Griffith, for giving your time to come to us. Public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance, we, the Planning Commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interests of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At 7:05, case R-19-020 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case R-19-020, Ray and Etha Taylor have petitioned to rezone .361 of an acre located on Caldwell Lane in the Dan River election district from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to combine with the adjacent 33 acres zoned A1. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Taylor is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Taylor, will you come forward, please? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissioners, other than what Ms. Hayes has already presented to us?
Uh, no, ma'am. No, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? No one has signed up to speak for this. Does anyone here that came in late did not have opportunity to sign wants to speak to this? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At 7:06, case R-19-020 is closed to public hearing. Mr. Horn?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and I have visited the site and also spoken to Mr. Taylor, and if you guys can look in the packet, it's kind of a no-brainer. I mean, we're trying to add three tenths of an acre to gain access to 33 acres that's already zoned A1 agricultural. So therefore, in case R-19-020, I recommend that we grant the petition.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Horn, second by Mr. Haymore to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that change and be changed from R1 to A1. Any discussions? Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll for the vote?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller's absent.
Case R-19-020, by a vote of seven for, is recommended to the Board of Supervisors to change his zoning from R1 to A1, and let the vote show one was absent. At 7:08, case R-19-021 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case R-19-021, Thomas and Janet Brown have petitioned to rezone 20.73 acres located on Randolph Drive and on Mount Tabor Road in the Dan River election district from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to make the zoning consistent with the adjacent farm. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brown is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Brown, will you come forward, please? Good evening and welcome. Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissioners, other than what Ms. Hayes has already presented to us?
No, that's about it.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? No one has signed up for to speak on this case. Anyone here that did not have opportunity wish to address it? Thank you, Mr. Brown. At 7:09, case R-19-021 is closed to public hearing. Mr. Horn?
Again, Mr. Chairman, in my opinion, a kind of a no-brainer. You've got 20 acres sitting in the middle of this big farm that's zoned R1 residential. I've known the Browns for probably 40 years. Makes no sense why this was done that way. So, in this case, R-19-021, I recommend that we grant the petition.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Horn, second by Mr. Dudley to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that zoning be changed from R1 to A1. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, call the roll for vote, please.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller's absent. Seven and one absent.
Case R-19-021, by a vote of seven for, one absent, recommend to the Board of Supervisors that changing of the zoning be from R1 to A1. At 7:10, case S-19-005 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case S-19-005, William Dawson has petition for a special use permit on .48 of an acre located on Mount Herman Circle in the Chatham Blair's election district for a public garage. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dawson is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Dawson, will you come forward, please? Good evening and welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissioners, other than what Ms. Hayes has already presented to us?
Uh, I don't know about "present." First of all, I'm as nervous as I can be. I'm not used to this, but...
We're all just part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Motley. Yeah, so basically, what I'm trying to do is just have a legal establishment. I'm not trying to open a huge mechanic shop or anything in a residential area. I just already have an existing shop that I built three years ago. I went through numerous different things to try to keep the community clean. I have a fence around it. I did not do this for the fact of zoning or ordinance or anything that. I did it for the respect of the neighbors. I've sold to them as I was doing it. I have a little two-bay shop, and most of all of my customers, I'd say 95%, is either religious-based friends or actual personal friends that I do. I try to keep everything monitored. I try to respect everybody, as we spoke before. I've actually, the only thing that I have not done, honestly, since we've done, I've alleviated half of the cars. I didn't know, I had just changed from one shop to another, so I didn't really know what the coordinates was. I closed down a dealership. I was kind of put in a bind, so yes, I did kind of bring a little unnecessary cars at that, you know, structure of the time, which I've, you know, cleaned all that up, got that straight. I discussed with half of my neighbors on that fact, and then talked to them about what they want, you know, you know their feelings too, because they live next to me. So, all I'm saying is, I have a fence also where nobody can see what I'm doing. I have a fence around it. I have one that's closed. You know, I'm just trying to do something. That way, I can do my personal things three days a week and just have a little something to do four days a week while I'm working in the shop. That, like I previously stated, that I built three years ago, and I really haven't had injections and until I, you know, basically, I want to be legal is what I'm trying to do. So, this is why I'm going with this action.
Mr. Dawson, I, first of all, I want to thank you for taking time, spending time with me and explaining what you was aiming to do when we visited together. Approximately, how many cars do you have now on the lot? Because as I told you when I pulled in and started talking, it was 23 vehicles that was there. Approximately, how many do you have on the lot now?
Probably about 18. I don't have an accurate count. I did not do that. We did talk about that, and you said, you know, make sure, see how many. I have moved quite a few out, and then I've set other things, and I talked to Ms. Bonnie, my neighbor, about moving some that has been sitting there for two or three years, you know. Being a mechanic and a younger guy, kind of like, you know, a little hot rod and this and that. So, within the next couple of weeks, all of the unnecessary stuff will be moved, and then it will only be as structured by law.
Oh, Ms. Hayes, how many cars, according to the county ordinance? What is the ordinance as far as vehicles being on the lot?
Inoperable. He's allowed three inoperable vehicles, and they have to be undercover.
They have, okay. Then, is it a certain amount he can have whilst waiting for parts, or is it anything in the county ordinance? Wasn't it about 10 or some of my...
Um, you can, you can put restrictions on it. That's left up to the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the BCA, and the BCA can put those restriction and limit the number.
So, it's not a county ordinance of how many, but it's just, but he can only have three inoperable or unlicensed vehicles?
If the BCA limits him to five that he's working on, then he can have five that he's working on, or 10. One of them does have 10 on Woodmont School Road.
And she did say undercover, so can we clarify that as far as undercover? Is structured a fence around everything where no, from ground structure, they can see? And that is one thing I was explaining, and I do have that up. The welding was supposed to come today to finish my fence, and I just put a whole lot of money in to get structured. That way, when I shut it, nobody can see anything from any exterior grounds, other than maybe a commercial. So, there again, you know, where my residence is, I did take pictures, you know, I have commercial all the way around me. In fact, my car lot that I existentially owned is a baseball throw away from my porch. So, that was my car lot. Here's my shop. Here's another business. There's business three-quarters around me, and I took pictures of that just from my physical view, from my property, you know, because I'm sure my neighbors will present their case also. So, from my porch, I see nothing but business is where I'm at, you know.
As I was explaining to you, do you have tonight some of your neighbors that's here to support you but do not wish to speak?
Well, I have some neighbors that support me, that I have two with me, but most of my neighbors are, and I've talked to them, and then one, Ms. Bonnie, I've talked to, and she told me how the other neighbors, you know, so, you know, they can speak for themselves, but yes, they are here.
I do, I do have some people signed up, but I don't know whether you have or not.
Yes, sir.
Do y'all have any questions for me?
How many cars that are completely not necessary, that you can reduce it down to? Let me ask you that.
I could keep cars down to five in and out, you know, as far as, you know...
But you've got 18 now, correct?
I have 18, but do understand that I've been in business for eight years at a car lot.
Yes, sir.
And then we've resolved that business ship, and then I, you know, I just came over.
I understand.
So, you know, I'm in the process of actually renting another lot to keep stuff on and this and that. So, that's the reason why.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any, Ms. Meese?
Oh, what are your open hours?
From 10 to 5, and that's Monday through Thursday.
Through Thursday.
Friday and Saturday, I, actually, I go into ministry is what I do, but, you know...
Mr. Dawson, how about 11 o'clock at night?
Well, not as far as actual, just like, commercial stuff as far as business, but no, I mean, I have been out there at 11 o'clock at night, but not necessarily within this two months that I've been there, just throughout the past and stuff. You know, being a younger man, sometimes I do, but that, not customarily, no. I don't make a practice of that. And to point out to, being a mechanic shop, you have an air compressor. I've soundproofed it, and there again, I did that once. I actually built it for the respect of my neighbors. Ms. Bonnie actually said, not inside, but outside, she can hear it. So, I've talked to her actually about going ahead, because three portions of it is soundproof, the opening for air, but yeah, so I'm going to go ahead and soundproof that. She, nobody has ever complained with noise, and this is actual conversation prior to this hearing. No noise other than just hearing us speak, you know, which she said, that's, you know, that's, people speak, so that's not really an issue. I make sure I respect everybody. I really do, you know, and with any objections, I'm sure they'll agree to that. I make sure I respect all of my neighbors, you know, and there again, I want to point out, I'm not trying to open a huge mechanic shop. I just want to be able to, you know, make a living and do what I've already invested in, maybe $20-some thousand in this shop three years ago that never has been an ejection over, so...
Any more questions? If you don't mind, say that first, I do have people signed up, and then after they speak, you'll get to come back and rebuttal.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Motley.
Thank you.
Ms. Bonnie Metters? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. I am Bonnie Metters, and I'm here to oppose the special permit for public garage by my neighbor, Mr. William Dawson. I have lived in the Mount Herman community in the same house for 36 years. My property is adjacent to Mr. Dawson's, and more specific, my driveway is approximately 25 to 30 feet from his garage. Most residents on our state road are families with well-maintained homes who have lived on Mount Herman Circle for at least 20 years. Since January of 2019, there has been an increase in traffic and noise related to the transition of Mr. Dawson's yard and garage to a business. By mid-April 2019, it appeared Mr. Dawson was working full-time from his garage. There are three reasons why I oppose the special use permit for a public garage. The first is noise. There are all types of vehicles, vans, cars, rollbacks, wreckers coming and going. When I'm outside, I hear the air compressor and various mechanical tools, and this is most days. When I work, when I get off work, I work in the evenings, so I get off at 11:15 at night, and then I walk my dogs. It's not unusual for the lights to still be on in the garage. Now, I can't say if he's working or if the lights are just on, but they're on. The traffic is my number-two reason. Our road is a two-lane narrow state road. I have witnessed multiple vehicles that either miss the driveway to the garage or can't get in the driveway due to it being blocked by other vehicles. These vehicles then turn around in my driveway, and then, then if there is no room in the garage driveway, they just stop in the road on Mount Herman Circle.
Excuse me, Ms. Metters, could you summarize your three minutes?
Yes.
Is coming up, so could you summarize it, please?
So, basically, I oppose the noise. I oppose the traffic. And lastly, I oppose that there are seven vehicles that I counted on July the 3rd, and then again, yesterday, that have no current tags, that are not covered, that are sitting in full view of my backyard because there's no fence from just a section of my backyard all the way around the back of his lot. So, the neighbors that are behind us, which is two houses plus businesses, but two houses, there is no fence, and they have full view, as well as I do, of his property.
Thank you.
And I do have some pictures, if anybody would want to see them.
If you'd like, give them a pass. Now, they'll stay with us. You know that.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Metters. Diane Mahone, is that, did I pronounce that correct?
McMahon.
Mahone, yes. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Diane McMahon, and I live on Mount Herman Circle, and I live directly across the street from Mr. Dawson. I've lived on Mount Herman Circle my whole life. Most of the neighbors have been there 30 to 50-plus years, same basic neighbors. Our street is a very narrow state road. My main complaint is the traffic is really, really bad. It's just constant, day and night, out and in, 10, 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, cars going in and out, people stopping in the middle of the road. My other concern is the rescue squad may not even be able to get through because sometimes there are wreckers blocking the road, there've been rollbacks blocking, big trucks with trailers, delivering trucks. It's like Grand Central Station. He was already operating across the street in the other garage, and we noticed by the spring, it looked like he was full-time. That's the reason we hadn't said anything until now. We feel like he should have looked into the rules and regulations before he started operating this, rather than building it, doing it, and then asking after the fact. His driveway is also too narrow, and pretty often, cars go into the ditch and he has to pull them out. There's no other commercial property on Mount Herman Circle. The only property he's speaking of is on Route 41, which is a five-lane highway. For this and many other reasons, I oppose it, and I have the signatures of all of the neighbors on Mount Herman Circle that oppose it. Some of them couldn't be here tonight, but they plan on being at the zoning next week, and I also have pictures.
Y'all have any questions? Ms. Henderson?
Ms. Henderson's got a question.
I'd like to see the pictures, and also, you touched a little bit on what my first question was going to be. With, the gentleman said that his property is encompassed by commercial properties or businesses, so if you could...
The property is, that he was speaking of, is all fronting on Route 41.
Okay.
So, his is actually on Mount Herman Circle, which is a completely separate, small state road.
Okay. I'll look at the pictures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. It's Hughes, actually.
Hughes, okay. Excuse me.
No offense. I'm not actually a neighbor of Mr. Dawson. He's just a good friend of mine. Known him for quite a few years. I'm basically here as a character witness for him. I have had my car there several times for him to work on. I've never noticed it being in the way or blocking the road when I have been there, and I did some work for Mr. Dawson, painted his house because he was concerned about the way it would look. I mean, his concern was to make his place attractive to the neighborhood. I painted his house. I did some excavating work for him in the past. That's, he's just, I've gone to him because he's, he's done a good job. He's an honest person, and I can trust him. It's hard to find a mechanic that you can trust, so that's pretty much...
Any questions? Is that welcome? Joe, welcome? Good evening and welcome.
You don't know how many times I get that. Thank you. I'm just basically going to piggyback on Mr. Hughes' thoughts about Will Dawson being a man of integrity and being honest. He is in transition, and I've been helping him to, you might say, beautify his property to respect the neighbors as he transitions into his small business, and basically, that's all I have to say. He's a good man.
Have you helped to move any of the cars, anything?
No, no cars. I've been, we've done the fence, I've helped with the fence maintenance, things like that, the lawn care, and things of that nature, but I haven't helped with any cars at all.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. That's all I have to sign up. Does anyone here wish to address this that did not have opportunity to sign up?
First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for allowing us to hear it, and there again, I thank you also, too, for being honest and coming forward like we talked before. And even no matter what the result of this is, we're still all neighbors, you know, so it's a respectful situation, no matter how it goes. So, as far as with Bonnie's testimony, as we stated, the undercover, so I personally walked around with her in the yard, only one car, and if we're talking about one car, we're only actually talking about 10% of that car that she can actually visually see from Statue of the Law, as was stated. So, from the back of my property, the fence comes in, there was a car there, and, and to be honest, previously, I did kind of have it pushed a little bit forward. We pushed it back. There's about that much more that she can see. She states that she sits at her kitchen table and does business, writing letters, and she could see that little bit of corner of that car. So, I told her I would push it back. In fact, actually, no, I told her we'd get rid of it because it really doesn't need to be there to begin with, to be honest with you. So, really, that's all she can see from her property. As far as the lights being on at night, to be honest with you, I'd leave the lights on all night long a lot of times, but as she stated, whether she knows I'm in and there or not, you know, so that just represents, I'm not making noise at night, therefore, because she doesn't even know if I'm in the shop or not. And to be honest, I'm really not. You know, every now and again, as I stated before, yeah, I would be in there a little later at night, and there again, that represents that she cannot hear me at night. later at night, and there again, that represents that she cannot hear me at night. As far as my driveway, past tense, as far as a customer, actually, not even a customer, he is a customer in my other shop, but he's a friend when he comes to my house at that point. He left his car there in neutral, and it rolled into the driveway, or into the ditch that the county kinda messed up, to be honest with you, but anyways, because I never had it. So we pulled that out, but I have a fence around, the driveway's extended, yes, a few cars have been towed in, and I say a few, maybe seven. I made sure I deal with one tow company that I personally deal with. Now, if you call your own AAA, sometimes it's a little different, but I deal with my own tow company because I know he comes in and he backs right in. He does not even pull into the neighbor's yard when he pulls in. There have been, and I personally do not agree with that either, if somebody does pass by. The way I built my fence, and I have pictures, so I built my fence and I brought it in 15 foot before my gate. That way, people can pull in and not be in the road. I actually thought this whole thing out, and there again, for the respect of the neighbors, I have pictures of all that, the way I did it. There's not people like sitting out in the road, and if it is, then I'm on top of it, I'm stopping it. And therefore, again, with the transition over, once I get to the point of five cars in and out or just minimizing, that definitely will not be an issue, okay? I'd like to bring back to the point that it's, the people I work on is people I know. I could personally talk to them and tell them, "Don't pull in my neighbor's yard, don't, you know, don't do that." That is disrespectful, I mean, to be honest with you, it is. You know, you pass by, and they have done that to Ms. Bonnie, she's a very sweet lady. I'll talk to her, and I, you know, so with all those, I mean, but as far as the ditch, I built it three years ago, so as far as the disrespect to the neighbors, they're out there accommodating me like, "Hey, this is nice, we put sidewalks in, we painted the houses up, put shutters up, new gutters, new driveway, new fence, new gate for everything." This has not been in the last two months, you know, since I did this. This has been over a course of three years. But there again, as their point is, from April on to now, I have increasingly been working there. So, yes, from April on, and these are improvements that I'm, you know, of course, not willing, but will fix. So that's really all I have to state on that, unless there's any more questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Do you have a deadline when you can have these fixed? Can you give us a date?
A date as far as having everything within statute? So on the 14th, I'm going to Canada for a trip. I can have 50% of it done before the 14th of July, which I think would put us in coordinates as far as what you were stating, you know, everything's behind the fence. The fence will be up, it should've been today. Within a week, the fence will be up, so I'll be in zone with on that as a correction she stated to us. Is that correct, or am I wrong?
You're only allowed three inoperable regardless of a fence.
Now, inoperable means that not running?
It has to be, have tags on it, inspection sticker, and be running. If it says for more than 60 days, it's considered inoperable.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so I would say at the end of July, unless you request before that, and I would do whatever I need to do to honor that, but without strain by the end of July. There again, I mean, unless you request, and I can make it happen. And that's from our previous conversations, you said, "Don't rush yourself." So I personally do like to rush myself, as, you know, I'm trying not to, but, I mean, I'll get them out of there tomorrow if you tell me to, but, you know...
Well, we can just make suggestions, we cannot tell you to do...
Well, like I spoke to you that day, you suggested me, and I'm more than happy to abide by that, you know? I want everybody to be happy, I wanna respect my neighbors, I wanna do this legal, I didn't do this at the limb. You know, I read the laws, I understood, I went to get a business license, they said, "You don't need a business license." I'm like, "You don't need a business license?" So then I read the zone, I thought, you know, and then I had the job, or had the shop already, you know, I said something at one time to my neighbor, and she was like, you know, I'm like, "No, I'm not opening the shop up here, this is three years ago." You know, I was like, "But I'll keep it clean." She was like, "Well, you're gonna make money out of it, you need to keep it clean," you know, so that was back then, you know, I don't, you know, how things change, but what would y'all recommend?
We don't.
Okay, well, say, "Well, my word is by the end of January, I can..." Or July, I'm sorry, good gracious. Yes.
You're looking for an extension, aren't you?
Yeah.
Apologies.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to view the pictures.
Yes, ma'am.
Give it to Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
You're good.
I didn't try to hide anything either, so, you know, that way you can see, you can see the fence.
Was you aware of the petition of the people that was against it, 20 people?
No, I was aware of the one straight across, Mr. Rigney, he's for it, he's fine. And then to the right of me, the property, they was fine with it, but I'm sure, you know, the adjacent, they probably, you know, it doesn't mean, but here again, I mean, so you have the one across the street from me that is here to subject, and they personally built their house, they didn't just like buy a house, they built their house. Behind their house is a junkyard, okay? Equally down my road, the next road, is a full-size junkyard. Grandfather then, regardless, they chose to build their house, join in the junkyard, okay? The neighbor to the left of Bonnie is literally living across the street from another shop. I don't think anything in the record that they have ever complained about him. I mean, and his shop looks like, you know, forgive me, but like a shack, you know? My shop looks like a reputable, clean, you know, building, and it's, and there again, when I say shop, I emphasize on a small structure. I'm not talking about a huge, you know, conglomerate. But no, I was not aware of that as far as that many, but you know how it is when you have people on your side, as you said, 30-year, they was against the buildings on 41 to begin with, you know? 41 is, I mean, you know, somewhat we have to prosper a community at least in commercial zones, so if you're against something that's building in a commercial zone, then you're gonna be pretty much against anything, I would think.
Mr. Dawson, when did you purchase this property?
So, my mother died, I took custody, and my brother that has autism, so I've rented the property for about three years, so I would say about 10 years I've been there? No, how long? Because it's been, I've been at the shop for eight. Eight, eight, well, no, okay, yeah, because I've been there eight, so about eight years, yes, sir.
According to our package, it was 2016 when you purchased.
Oh, no, no, sir.
Did a bargain and sale, 29th day of February 2016, between Gary Oaks Merritt and Lawrence Wilson Merritt, grand tours of the first part to William C. Dawson, the second guarantee of the second part.
So actually, that might, that, I get, well, obviously, that is true, so I've been living there for eight years. Because, yeah, because I got a 10-year loan, and it's 7.5 years if I pay, so, yeah, so that probably is correct. But so I've been living there for eight years.
But the people that came here is what's concerning me now, they have been there a lot longer than you have moved in.
Yeah, but unfortunately, I do have the youth on my, you know, my deal, yeah. Unfortunately, life does play that as far as, you know, seniority, but, you know, there again, I'm a striving young man that's not, as I stated, I've kept everything clean, you know, I don't hear any of, you know, as far as, that's all, I mean, I'm not here to disrespect anybody, I try to keep everything clean, yes. I have not owned it as long as them, true, that is not the case here, I don't think, but it does have a bearing, apparently, yes, sir.
As I told you when I was in that discussion, I told you if you contact all your neighbors, you know, and get them to come, and I was gonna ask, right now, everybody that is for Mr. Harris in favor of this special use permit, will y'all please rise? I'm talking about just on this case here.
Dawson, yes, sir.
Mr. Dawson, yes.
Will y'all please rise?
Those that are in favor.
Thank you. The ones that is a guest with y'all, please, and I told you I would do this...
You did, yes, sir, Mr. Motley.
You said some of your neighbors may not want it to speak.
Well, one has a handicap, Mr. Rigney, so unfortunately, he wasn't able to walk up the steps.
Thank y'all.
But yes, you did, yes, Mr. Motley.
Don't have any more questions? You have anything else you'd like to present to us?
No, sir, I think, you know...
At 7:39, case S-19-005 is closed to public hearing.
Thank you, board.
Fellow commissioners, this is in my district, I've been up twice to Mr. Dawson. I talked to him one time, the first time he was not at home. It was 23 vehicles. It's true that his property is right back of 41, for which you have, in your maps, you can see, we've got businesses, we've got a little of everything, but I could close. We've got residential, you have Wilson Lawn and Garden, I stood in his yard, didn't have to walk around or anything, I could count over 50 lawnmowers lined up back of Wilson's business, that's how close he is to commercial property on 41. And as you can see in the map, how close it is. Now, Wilson had the lawnmowers lined up, they was mowed, groomed, everything in the area was well-groomed, there wasn't no lots, trash here, or anything. But as some of the people had explained, it was tight turning in to his business. He had put up a fence partially around the property, and he told me he was finishing the fence, and he could not give me a date. Everything he said was in our communications of what it is. But when we have always discussed that when the neighbors, in the neighborhood, they are the ones living, and as the evidence is presented to us in our package, Mr. Dawson has come in, passed the people that's already there, they have lived there all the time. So I would, at this time, I hate to do it, I understand what he's doing, but due to the neighborhood, what the neighbors has come and presented to us, y'all have the petitions, he only had two people to come and speak for him, and both of them do not live on Mount Herman Circle. I know they're good friends. I think Mr. Dawson is a very outstanding citizen of Pennsylvania County, but I would recommend a motion to deny this to the Board of Zoning Appeals that they do not issue a special use permit.
I'll second that motion.
I need a motion for...
I'll make the motion for case S-19-005, that we do deny this.
Motion by Mr. Dudley is our second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Haymore, that we recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals that they deny this special use permit for a public garage. Any discussions?
Mr. Chairman, let me just make a couple of comments about Mr. Dawson. Everything that I've heard about Mr. Dawson, he's one of the finest young men that is probably in Pennsylvania County. I had a couple of phone calls that talked about his ability, and that he was a great guy, and I don't question that in the least, but I guess I'll get back on my soapbox again and state to the viewers that when Mr. Scares appointed me to this job...
That's right.
I told him that if the community was, and I wanted him to know before he appointed me, that if the community was against rezoning, that he could bet his sweet bippy that I was gonna be against it, and this community has spoken, and that's the reason I'm second in this motion.
Any other discussions?
Mr. Motley, I just wanna remind everybody, if you remember at the beginning of our meeting, Mr. Motley read the zoning precepts, and in that it said, "In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County." And that includes the ones on Mount Herman Circle, all 20 of them.
Any other comments? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call for a roll for the vote?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
No.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller. So one absent, 6-4 denying the case, and one against it.
Case S-19-005, by a vote of 6-4, one against, one absent, to recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals that they deny this permit for a public garage. At 7:45, case S-19-006 is open to public hearing, Ms. Hayes.
Case S-19-006, Mishix Solar Center has petition for a special use permit on 566.86 acres. Actually, the total of the entire solar facility is 900 acres, the rest is located in...
Henry County.
Henry County. Located on Cascade Road and Mishix Road, Leaksville Junction Road in the Tunsil Election District for a large-scale solar facility. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Victoria Alexander is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Alexander, you come forward, please. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me here tonight. I have a few site plans and just a brief overview of the project that I've given to Ms. Hayes, a bit of an exclamation, but just to start, we're a Virginia-based developer, I'm from Charlottesville. We've been doing this for about 12 years. We're active in 20 states, but Virginia's kind of our home turf, so we're excited for the potential to add another project to our portfolio in Pennsylvania County. We're unique in development in that Coronal doesn't, or Lincoln, excuse me, we just switched companies or names in our company. We operated under Coronal, which is how we submitted the application, but we have a new equity backing, which is why we're under Lincoln. But we're an end-to-end platform development, so we won't develop the solar farm kind of towards NTP and then sell it all. We'll own and operate and engineer the facility, so through the lifetime of the project, you're with Lincoln Energy. And I am specifically the project manager for this development, and have been down to Pennsylvania quite a few times now, so it's always a pleasure. As Ms. Hayes mentioned, the project extends into Henry County as well, so there's about a 550-acre parcel directly, it's southwest, so it's right on the border of Henry County and North Carolina. The site acre is 550, but with our preliminary site plan, it's only about 300 at max acres that would be used for the facility, and the rest extends into Henry County. Their permitting process is pretty straightforward, it's a by right permit through site plan approval, but in all, it's a 50-megawatt project. We'll interconnect to a high-voltage transmission line that runs directly through Mr. Harrison's property. And again, as Ms. Hayes mentioned, it's kind of east and west of Mishix Road. I know our company has had some dilemma on how to pronounce it versus Misha or Mishix, but we'll leave that up to the community. Last week, it was nice to meet a few members of the community as well. We had a meeting explaining the project and reached out to adjacent neighbors of the potential project commissioners and Board of Zoning Appeals as well to just kind of give a briefing and an overview of what we're looking to do. I did note some notable concerns that should be discussed, such as decommissioning, which we would require, or you all would require a decommissioning plan to be presented before construction. Landscaping, we have an operations and maintenance team that handles mowing and washing of the panels. As far as noise, it's inaudible from the fence sign, so it's a six-foot fence that goes around the entire facility, and there's inverters within the project, but we place those kind of farther in, and it's about, if you stand outside of your AC unit outside, it's a low humming noise, and considering buffers from roads and the fence line, it is inaudible from the fence line. As well as vegetative screening, we wanna be good neighbors and good community members, we'll utilize existing buffers for view shed, and then where necessary, we'll plant at minimum four to six feet height trees to utilize that vegetative screening. And those were some concerns that I took note of, happy to address any others, but just kind of as a holistic viewpoint, we're excited to develop here. If approved, it's significant tax revenue. We're also kind of excited that it's sited near the mega park that's coming online, it's an ideal location, adding a lot of load onto that grid. Adding a lot of load onto that grid and having a renewable energy project right there helps balance out the load a bit. And just solar specifically and it being a new industry and having Pennsylvania open its doors to it is a unique opportunity for other industries to kind of come into Pennsylvania and say, hey, this is a great spot. It's innovative and it leaves room for other industries to come in.
Ms. Alexander, I want to thank y'all, your company, for having the open house, open to the public so they could come and answer your questions. As Mr. Horn and myself was our representative commissioner, we had another open house going on at the same time. But one of the questions we asked you and that you was talking about how you maintain your property inside the fence, and my question was, how do you maintain the fence? The vegetation growing up, do you allow vegetation to grow up on it? And you said y'all would have, and I think Mr. Horn says, please have an answer for us at the public hearing.
Yeah, so...
So could you please address that?
Of course. I brought this back to our project engineers. We have a specific engineer specifically for Mishix. And we addressed the fence line problem and we can add that in a provision for the special use permit to completely control and maintenance the fence line as well, so that, or at least a foot beyond it, so that there's not vegetative growth along the fence and that we're keeping it clean cut for the project site.
On the set back...
On the exterior, correct.
On the exterior of the fence inside. Does that sit you, Mr. Horn?
Yes, it does.
And that would be part of the motion, is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
I think that's what we discussed that night at the public hearing, I mean, open house that you had.
Yeah.
Any questions for?
Ma'am, how are you with Henry County?
We're in good relations. I met with them for a pre-app meeting right around the time I met with Ms. Hayes. I think it was back in January. So obviously, this is a larger step process going through Pennsylvania County. A site plan approval is pretty straightforward, so once we go through stricter due diligence, such as like wetland delineations and kind of topographic screening, and we mature the project and we'll have a finalized site plan, that's when we'll present it to Henry County for approval. We don't want to put a draft in front of them that's not finalized and keep having to go back and review. So when we have everything perfect and in line, we'll go in front of them and present the site plan.
One other question. You mentioned something about the trees, tree line at what, four to six foot?
Mm-hmm.
I certainly want to make sure that it's six foot or above.
Okay.
We're not pleased at all with what's happened down at Dan River.
Okay. We're pretty familiar with vegetative screening at this point and we don't want to come in and upset neighbors or view shed is important, especially in rural areas like this, so we can accept that.
That would be part of the motion, too, is that right?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question.
Just curious, is this your first project in that area in Virginia? Or do you have...
In Pennsylvania specifically? It's our first project.
In Virginia?
No, we've done seven different projects in Virginia. A lot of them are owned by Dominion. When we transferred over to Lincoln, we have about four projects that we own and operate. One is in Sussex County. One is in, let's see, I wrote them down. Woodland Solar Center is in Smithfield, that's about a 20-megawatt. We have two in Fluvana and Goochland that are smaller than five megawatts. We worked with Central Virginia Electric Cooperative. They wanted to add renewables into their portfolio, so we obliged, but we typically do larger projects. 20-megawatts is typically the smallest we do.
I have a question.
Mr. Horn?
It just hit me. Should Henry County say no? Would you go forward with project in Pennsylvania County?
Yes, and...
And provided we said yes?
Yes. So we went through an initial scoping call with the utility line that's owned by Dominion to determine how much load could be put on that line specifically. We had originally cited the project to be bigger at a 65-megawatt threshold, but we had to downsize because the line can only handle 50-megawatts. It would still be a successful project, specifically just in Pennsylvania County, because it would equate to higher than 20, and that's kind of our minimum threshold. So we would still move forward with it if Henry County opposed.
Thank you.
What's the term of the lease? Are you liable to, I mean...
Yeah, so we're currently under option. We're about a year into it and the lease would start, and it's a 40-year lease, and so that's the lifetime of our equipment, so we like to have that lease length match it.
Approximately, what would the tax return to the county be per year and roughly for the 40 years?
So year one is around $65,000. Lifetime of the project is around $800,000.
With no expense to the county? Any other questions? I have one person sign up, so if you'll...
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
We'll get the call back.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Jeffrey, is that Wolfall?
Walter.
Wolfall, okay. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. I actually signed the thing just in case I had a question or two, so I really don't have any questions, but I, as a part-time resident about half the time in Pennsylvania County, I do want to thank this company for showing an interest in this part of the county, which is the very, very farthest south and west of the county. And it's great to see some interest coming into that area of the county and I'm excited on what this might do for that area. It's a modern technology, it's a new technology, and it's a needed technology and it'll be interesting to see that evolve in southern Pennsylvania County. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for? Thank you, sir. I have no other sign up. Is anyone here that did not have opportunity to sign up, wants to speak on this case? If not, Ms. Alexander? Do you have anything else you'd like to present to us or...
Not right now, no.
Okay. At 7:57, case S-19-006 is closed to public hearing. Mr. Stowe?
Yes. I had to work that night. But anyway, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this project.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussions? Motion by Mr. Stowe, second by Mr. Dudley, we recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals they issue a special use permit for a utility-scale solar energy facility. Any discussions? Ms. Hayes, will you come forward?
Did you want to add the...
Mr. Chairman, yes, I want to make sure that those seedlings are at least six foot.
At least six foot?
Yes.
We've been asking that they plant four to six foot at planting, the reason being if they get a little bit higher. We've talked to some landscaping companies and they say that when they get about eight foot or so and try to plant them, a lot of them die out. But we are making sure, if you want the six foot, we'll go with six foot, but we require that even after it goes through the BZA. That is something that our office is sticking to, is with the four to six foot trees, we want to see a maintenance plan, a landscaping plan, and that will be brought back before y'all for review.
That's fine.
Yeah, we're taking more control on the landscaping and not letting what happened with the first one happen again.
Yes, sir. That's fine. Thank you, ma'am.
And we also...
Mr. Stowe, with your permission, also add that one foot outside the fence maintained.
Okay, that will be, okay, I'll make sure that's in with the...
Keeping the growth down off the fence.
She also offered conditions there in the packet, so if you want to accept those conditions and add that the maintenance plan.
He says yes.
I suggest that...
Yes, indeed, yeah.
I suggest that you accept the proposed conditions and then add anything beyond that. In their proposed conditions, they said at least five feet at planting, at time of planting.
Okay, and we also have the certification. It's the Pennsylvania County Plant and Commission Certification of substantially in accordance determination with the comprehensive plan that we usually get you to sign if you would like to go ahead and we take care of that instead of having to bring it back before the board again.
Is that agreeable in your motion, Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Right, so it's in compliance with the comprehensive, we'll put that in the packet. Also, take to the BZA.
There you go.
But now, will you call a roll with the conditions presented plus the one foot outside?
Yes.
Is that agreeable, Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
And five-foot trees, is that what y'all said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So for that recommendation, Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller. So that's seven-four.
The case S-19-006 is passed by a vote of six, seven for, one absent, to recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals that they issue a special use permit for a utility-scale scholar energy facility with the conditions.
Thank you, ma'am, for your presentation, too. Thank you.
At 8:01, case S-19-007 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes?
Case S-19-007, Rortmeal Solar, has petition for a special use permit on a total of 252.96 acres located on Jacobs Road and Rortmeal Road in the Stanton River Election District for a large-scale solar facility. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Stephen Young is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Young.
Good evening and welcome. We spoke again.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I do have some supplemental materials for the commission staff from the package that was sent out. These materials cover a neighborhood meeting that was held last week, and I'll talk a little bit about that, and also the decommissioning plan that was not in the initial package. Holocene solar is a, and I'll go through a little bit of the package you have, trying not to take too much of your time, but we are a Raleigh-based solar developer, very active in the Virginia market. We have, we specialize in smaller scale, in the range of five megawatts, distributed, distribution connect projects, so we're different than the utility scale space. This project size is three megawatts on 20 acres and connects directly to the Southside Electric Co-op line in that area. There's no substation or other facility upgrades for it. We've been in business 10 years and have 120 megawatts of project history throughout Carolinas, Virginia, and mid-Atlantic states. We selected the site based on capacity on the Southside electric system, as shown on page four of the presentation. And then the heart of it is the project overview, which shows the site. This is an ideal property, the 20 acres out of this 230-acre, two parcels. It's nestled back in on the back south side of the property on a south-facing slope, so it's far off of any roadways and away from adjacent landowners. We screened the sites, topography, environmental, all those concerns have been addressed on initial screening and we are underway with the environmental studies, the interconnect studies. Project's in fairly advanced development stage. Next up will be the surveys and planning for construction if approved. We have, these smaller projects are designed to fit into communities easily, low impact. This particular, we're doing nine projects like this in Virginia right now, and this particular one is probably one of the best sites in terms of how far back it is on the property. We do voluntarily do neighborhood informational meetings, so in the handout I gave you, it shows the postcard that we sent to the neighbors. We held the meeting at the library last week and we do all the adjacent parcels and parcels adjacent to those, adjacent to the adjacent. We had about 50 names on there. We had two landowners show up for the meeting. One popped in and just wanted to see where the project was in relation to her property and she didn't have any view shed, she left. There was another couple that stayed that is here tonight and they are a neighbor that borders the southeast side, a couple thousand feet away from the project as shown on the map. And they have a large, 500-foot-thick tree buffer between the project site and their property, but they told us at the meeting last week that during the winter time, that buffer isn't, it can see through that property. So we asked if we could meet with them. We met with them today with one of our engineers and looked at the, and also, Mr. Dudley was with us to look at their view shed, and it's likely that we'll propose a vegetative buffer now where we didn't think one was needed, but if you look on the east side of that our fenced area, we're recommending a vegetative buffer along that east side. Our specifications on the vegetation, we can provide to the county, we have a cut sheet on that. We do a combination of holly trees and some borovites, getting to pronounce it well, but it's a fairly thick vegetation that grows pretty tall over time and we're willing to comply with the planting specification for the plants. And I agree that if you plant them too large in the beginning, it threatens their life, but you do want to make sure that they're going to grow in to the height that's going to provide the visual buffer. We maintain that buffer along with the fence line and everything inside of it. So the landowners are here, I'm sure they'll want to talk, and I think they're agreeable to the buffer that we're proposing. We've had good support from our property owners, you know, nothing negative with the project and it's, there's plenty of information in the package if you have any questions about what we submitted.
My question again is the fence vegetation or maintaining the outside, but I noticed you said inside, too, so...
Yeah, so it's normal that we would have the fence in inside and somewhat outside. Oftentimes, there's trees we have to maintain as well, so our lease acreage is actually larger than the fence acreage, so we'll maintain everything inside the lease acreage, on the fence, inside the fence.
No vegetation, vegetation to grow up on the fence?
Yep. First time I've heard that question, but it's a good point, so. But we will have some vegetation now on the outside of the fence if that's agreeable to everyone, we'll maintain that buffer as well.
Sir, somewhere I have either read or heard about batteries, and yet I thought I heard you say you were going to put right back into the grid. Did I hear you correctly?
Yes, so the project will feed onto a three-phase distribution that is on the property, but we are, you'll see in the presentation, considering battery storage for this site. There's also pictures of self-contained enclosed lithium-ion battery storage that sits on a concrete pad, so it's, it comes in assembled, there's no access to the inside of the container, there's access doors on the outside. There's some basics about battery storage, rechargeable battery, lithium-ion, no toxic materials, common materials such as aluminum, nickel, manganese, and carbon. It's vented and conditioned to protect against any heat event. So the risk on lithium-ion, you've probably thought about with devices and airplanes, is there can be a risk of a thermal event, so that is managed through the ventilation and fire control system, NFA fire control system. It's a small, relatively small battery, battery storage technology is becoming more and more common. There are standalone battery storage facilities that you'll eventually see, you know, proposed in your community across Virginia, there's quite a few right now. It combines well with solar renewables. The overall emphasis is to, renewables are a variable source of generation, doesn't generate 24 hours a day like another power plant, so if you can have battery storage, it allows whoever's receiving that electricity to choose when to bring power onto the grid, so that battery would be operated by Southside, you know, to what's best for their system of the grid. It's not expected to cycle regularly. It's designed to have 100 cycles per year, but it'll probably be operated 20 to 30 times a year at their programming choice. It optimizes the plant for the utility at key times with high demand on the grid, it can have additional power to the solar. If the solar matches that peak, great, but if it doesn't, let's say it's a winter peak, they can have... they can have the option to discharge the battery. The components of the battery are recyclable. I know there's a lot of talk about that on the solar side, but the lithium-ion components are being recycled now. It's a large industry unto itself. We have more materials we can provide if there's more technical questions.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say I did meet with Steve and back Wednesday of last week, and, and every time that we discussed anything, he was on the up and up. The package that he put together for us was really good. We did have a meeting last Wednesday at the library, meeting went well. We had to, we was thinking we was going to have the library, and the library closed on us, so we had it outside. And, but they have a pavilion right beside the library, so these guys just jumped right in and said, hey, we'll do it there, and I want to commend you for a good package that you put together and a good presentation as well. Thank you.
We also have that package to submit, Karen, through the records, what was presented at the neighborhood meeting.
Oh, Mr. Young, what's the term of the lease? Are you level to say?
Yeah, sure. It's a twenty-year lease with two ten-year renewal options, so the life expectancy of the plant is between thirty and forty years.
Could you show the tax return on one year plus the twenty years? Do you have that?
I don't have it prepared. We could give that to you, to Mark, Karen, to make that available. I should have had it.
That was just.
Great job by the other company to have that ready. We obviously pay the portion of the taxes and the change of the assessment rate for the property owner, so that, that's our commitment and revenue benefit to the county.
Any other questions? I do have somebody to sign up, so if you'll be able to come back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry Wallington. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. My main concerns was the visibility of it for my lot, Marilla, and I think he's pretty well taken care of that, and also the batteries. I discussed that with him Tuesday night, and I'm still a little concerned about the batteries. These lithium-ion batteries explode pretty easily, and I wasn't going to see anything, and some gentleman on your board up there said we were ignorant of the solar power. So I figured, well, you know, maybe he's ignorant too. So that's about all I have to say.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
All right.
Oh, Mr. Wallington, Zone One signed up. Does anyone here wish to speak on this case that did not have opportunity to sign up in the meeting? If not, Mr. Young. Oh, you heard, Mr. Wallington, did y'all, did you answer his questions?
We definitely did on the vegetation. We have an agreement to come back out after we've surveyed in, in the winter time, when that view shed is clear, so that we can propose the vegetation to be in the right spot and right elevation. So we would be glad for that to be a condition of the special use permit.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I was also at that meeting that we had under the picnic shelter, and I was real impressed with Mr. Young's presentation. He's just got that air about him that you sort of trusting, well, you do trust him. He convinces you of his product, and I think he's done his homework. Mr. and Ms. Wallington had some reservations at night, and he accommodated them and agreed to come and review the site with them. He just went beyond, I think, the call of duty to really send a friendly atmosphere to that couple, and I think he's won them over, and Mr. and Ms. Wallington, I think, will be real happy. Thank you for coming. The presentation was wonderful. Very few came out, but they missed a really good presentation, and this packet is one of the best ones I've ever seen. Everything was in color, all of the staff's names, their credentials, their pictures, it's awesome. So please tell your staff, your marketing department, what a great job they did.
Thank you, Ms. Meese.
Any other? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to be in Pennsylvania.
At eight fifteen, case S nineteen dash oh oh seven is closed to public hearing. Mr. Dudley?
This would be in my district. First of all, I want to say we got the landowners here tonight, they just didn't come up and speak, but they're back in the back. This Mr. Nice in the pink shirt, Denise Godfrey, and then David Short is in the blue shirt. Now, everybody go and turn around and look at them, because that's them, and I'm sure that's some of David's children, but thank you guys also for being here. Wonderful family, I've known them thirty-five, forty, forty years. I'm starting to tell something now in my age, but now quit. Anyway, their daddy, Paul, whose land this is actually on, he built my first house and just did a wonderful job, and just, just good down-home people, and want to say thank you guys for being here tonight. And with that, I want to also say thanks for the good presentation that Steve and them give us at the Stanton River Library. Even if it was outside, he didn't miss a beat, did a wonderful job, and thank you so much for looking at Pennsylvania County to put something positive and stuff back up on the, the grid itself. So with case S dash nineteen dash zero zero seven, I make a motion that we send this and approve it and send it to the Zoning Appeals Board.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Ms. Meese, to recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals to issue a special use permit. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call for?
Do we still want to add like we did with the other?
Yes.
The five foot trees?
Yes, we do. Mm-hmm. And the resolution as well?
Yes, I have that also.
Yes.
Is that right, Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir, it is. That is correct.
Also have the resolution, yes, in accordance with the comprehensive plan. I'll give that to y'all soon.
Mr. Chairman, I'm seeing, I'm glad to see one go to the northern end of the county. They always feel left out up there.
That's right.
So I'm glad to see them go to the northern end of the county.
I feel like I am somebody now in that area. Thank you.
Let me go ahead and hand this out.
Ms. Hayes?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller? Absent.
Case S nineteen dash oh oh seven, by a vote of seven fall, one absent, to recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals to issue a special use permit for a utility scale solar energy facility.
With the conditions?
With the conditions, yes. At seven eighteen, the public hearing notice for Pennsylvania County is open. Ms. Hayes or Mr. signs, which one?
Eight eighteen.
Eight eighteen, Mr. Chairman.
Eight eighteen.
Eight, eight, eighteen.
Eight.
What does that say?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, what we advertise for tonight is for Appalachian Power to come and talk to you about where they stand on their project, and to again seek your approval that it is in compliance with our comprehensive plan. We've got a number of AEP folks, I'm not sure exactly who's speaking tonight, but David Swisher has been our contact. We've got the, your presentation is in your packet. We've also got the computer set up over there for PowerPoint.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. You want to try the PowerPoint or just?
I'd say go ahead and start.
Go ahead and start, okay. Several years ago, City of Danville Economic Development Department, Pennsylvania County Economic Development Department, City of Danville Electric Department, came to Appalachian Power and asked them if they could provide power to the Berry Hill industrial park, and we agreed to do that, even though at that time it was not in our service territory. So we went through the commission, State Corporation Commission, got that approved into our service territory, and we are the service provider for the Berry Hill industrial park. We came to you guys back in December of last year, two thousand and eighteen, and we introduced to you the project of what we planned to do to provide robust power to the industrial park. I'd like to take a few minutes just to review what has happened since we had introduced the project to you in two thousand and eighteen, December, and where we're at now. Just give you a little project overview. What we're here to construct is to provide about a five-mile, one hundred and thirty-eight KV transmission line, double-circuited to Berry Hill. The project is needed is because now there is no power source in the park that can provide the capacity and the megawatts needed for large industrial customers that will locate in that park. You also need a very robust system. Industrial customers cannot afford outages or SAGs in voltages, just the smallest SAGs causing them major issues. So there is nothing in the park now that can do that, and this is the most feasible and closest line that we have to build to the park that would, that would do that. Since our last meeting, if you'll... What we have done is we've introduced a study segment. We looked at all types of different routes possibly, that you'll see on the left, of what would be the best way to get to the, get the line built to the park. Our objective was to avoid and minimize impacts on the humans, people, properties, natural resources, and have the line located in a place that it would be not as visible as it could in other places. But we also had to keep in mind that this had to be a very robust power line that we had to construct to get to the park, because that was the whole purpose of it. We've met with the county, we determined the endpoint of the line, where the substation would go in the industrial park. We've agreed upon that and have an option currently in place to build a substation there. We used maps. We actually went out and have done field reconnaissance of this whole area, looking at where possibly this line could go, and then most importantly, we held a public open house back in January at the Brazos Elementary School. We invited a hundred and sixteen people, thirty people showed up, we had maps all over the wall, we could show them pretty much where all these lines were looking at going, where we thought we could possibly build the line, and we seeked their input. Then after that, we've also still met with other landowners that come back but had questions after the, after the open house and as we've moved along with our study. So after our open house, we went back, had these proposed routes, and then we narrowed it down to what we thought were three routes we would really seriously consider and study. These routes pretty much met the objectives of our study. We ended up picking Route C. If you see the proposed route, that is the most western route and the most southern route that kind of comes in and enters into the park. This route minimizes the overall impact of all the others that we looked at on the previous slide and this slide where we narrowed it down. Fewer residents that are impacted, fewer land conflicts. When we met at the open house, a lot of the public encouraged us to move as far west of Brazos as possible. We took that into consideration, and it ended up being that is probably was our best location. And it also is a pretty straight line, not a lot of curves, not a lot of bends, and that keeps the cost down on constructing a line like that. The land lays a little better in there. So where we're at now is basically we have a five-hundred-foot corridor of where we think that line will go. The reason why we have a five-hundred-foot corridor is when we go out and we meet with individual citizens and landowners of where the line will go, they may ask us to shift that a little bit, and we'll be able to do that within that corridor, within reason. So that's kind of where we're at now. We will end up with a hundred-foot right-of-way for this line, as what we'll end up, we'll go down to a hundred-foot right-of-way, and that is what we will acquire from the individual landowner, is a hundred-foot right-of-way to construct the line. Give you an idea, that's kind of an idea of what the line will look like, that picture right there. It'll be galvanized steel, double-circuit. Average height of the pole will be around a hundred feet, and the right-of-way will be a hundred feet wide. The reason why you see two circuits on that line, on that pole, one on the left, one on the right side, that is for the robust. If a tree or a fault would occur on one side of the line, the other side would stay energized, and the note, and the customers in the park would not lose power from that, so that's why you do the double circuit. The way it works is the line actually starts in the Axon Substation that we're tapping, goes to Danville. We tap that one hundred and thirty-eight line, come south with these two. A fault occurs between Axon and Berry Hill, the line still stays in service between Danville and Berry Hill, and if the opposite happens, of course, that would stay in line. In the park, we will construct a substation. We've already got an option from the county and a location picked out for that. It'll be about two hundred and seventy by three hundred and thirty, and the structures there will be fifty feet tall. That's where the transformer for the park, the breakers, all those type things will be located. Then from there, we'll build distribution lines which require forty-foot right-of-ways inside the park, out to serve the individual customers.
Will that be underground?
No, most likely that would all be overhead stuff. Our schedule and where we're at and what we're trying to obtain, just in review, we introduced the project to you guys in December. Since then, we've done our studies. We are now at the point where we have our five-hundred-foot corridor, and we are seeking your approval to go to the board supervisors, and then at their next meeting, if we receive your approval tonight, we will go to the board supervisors with their approval. After that, we will do our detailed engineering, narrow that line down to that hundred-foot right-of-way, and then we will go out and meet with the individual landowners and acquire the right-of-way from them, and those are purchased right-of-ways that we do. So I think you had that in your packet. That is actually our request tonight, that we seek your determination by the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission, that the general approximate location, character and extent of the proposed Berry Hill substation and associated transmission line, transmission line tap are substantial in accordance to the county's adopted comprehensive plan. And at this time, I would like to entertain any questions you guys have about the project. We have some more detailed maps, if you want to see exactly that stuff, we can roll those out and show them to you.
Any questions?
How you going to maintain, as far as the maintenance on the right-of-way? You going to bush hog, you going to spray? You tell me.
All the above.
Okay, okay.
Trim.
Danger trees, side trimming, all of it, okay. Thank you. What size is a power transformer in the substation?
First transfer will probably be a 30 MVA.
Okay.
Now, if they land a bigger customer, we need something different. We may have to put two in.
Right.
A lot of that will depend on what size customer.
Okay. As it increases, you would increase, absolutely.
Absolutely. The line would have at least in the top 100 megawatts of capability, at least. Then you'd have to, your transformers would have to size to that.
It'd be a designated line.
Could be that if you got a customer that was large enough, they could take service right off of the transmission line. They could do that, and they would own their transmission.
Right.
You got a hook on for a transfer, transmission line? Where are we hooking on that?
We're hooking on that to the west of Brazos. Do we have a map that could show exactly about where that's at? Might give you a better idea. But it's to the west of Brazos, to the south of 58, where we're not crossing over 58.
You're hooking on to that high-powered line coming through?
Yeah. It's an existing 138-line that goes from Axon to Danville. And just to the west of Brazos, south of 58, we're tapping on to it there and coming down.
That line doesn't, it's not too far from me, but yeah.
Okay. Does that help you there?
I pretty much know what he's talking about, so.
Yeah, Axon's over here.
Yeah.
Any other question for? I have people signed up, so then we'll answer, come back.
Sure.
Mr. Leon Griffin. Again, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, good evening. Appreciate what y'all do, and I wondered, could you see me?
Yes.
Can't miss you, Leon.
Are you running for office also?
Running for me.
But I appreciate the shirt myself being a fellow, so thank you.
I'm here tonight representing Harmony United Methodist Church. Part of the Board of Trustees. And upon finding out about all of this mega-park stuff and later on about the substation, we're excited about it. Haven't heard any negatives at church concerning the substation, and we'll be your next-door neighbor. And we're glad to see it and anxious to see something happening. Cascade is moving to the front.
Are you in competition with all the...
Yes, good. The only thing I have heard from neighbors, and I wish they were members of the church, by the way, is, you know, we're not opposed to the power line, and it's coming across my property, but when are we going to know for sure or close to where it's going to cross my property? And that's a legitimate concern. I think it should be addressed as soon as possible. So that's all I had to say, and we sure hope that you guys and gals will approve this.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Any questions for?
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate you coming and making this statement to us. Waverly and Barbara Cousins. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Chairman, Planning Committee members, and also to the visitors, and also to the Appalachian committee that is here. As the Planning Commission works on, or the planning works on for Appalachia where the line is located, we have some concerns and some issues. The power line that they have proposed is going to be another additional line across property that we, where we live. And the perpendicular change that it's going to make is going to go west, I guess it is, down across our property. And what happens is with the 100-foot right-of-way that it requires, we already have three power lines on our property that crosses it, going to Danville, and I think all three of them are owned by Appalachian. And the one is the high-voltage line that they need, that they're going to hook to on our property as it stands right now. And then it goes over and goes down to Leon's place and crosses, I think, somewhere down there. But because we have four lines already on our property, that's all taken 100 feet right-of-way, we're becoming strictly limited on the usage of our property. And it's going to cause us to lose money in the long run, we believe. The development of the property, which we anticipate doing years from now, will be limited because we have these four lines. This will actually be a fifth line going the other direction, but it's still going to be requiring 100-foot right-of-way. There's nothing much that we can do with the land. We can't grow trees, you know, any height such as timber. We can't build houses. We can't develop lots. And so just about all the opportunities for making any changes and additions to improve the property itself, we're going to be restricted totally by the power lines that actually takes up so much of our property. So for that reason, we've met with Mr. Jacobs and committee, and they have done some realigning, trying to help that situation. And we appreciate the move that they've already made. But we still would like for them to seek other options, and I think they are looking at other options, and I hope they are. But if there's any way possible to shift it so that it doesn't take up so much land for us, where we are restricted on how we can use it, and what can we do with it, or how can we earn money off of it, it's a bit much to have four lines coming across our one piece of property. Now, there are many other routes, and they've looked at a lot of them, so I'm not questioning their ability to look, and I thank them. I too am for the Berry Hill product. I'm not against the Berry Hill product. I'm for prosperity, et cetera. I want to see us go forward with it, but I would like to at least have some other sharing in this dilemma about the 100-foot widespread that takes from, almost from up from Locust Drive all the way to the rear of our property is where it goes, and perpendicular to the other line. So we feel really bad about what's happening to our land, and then we've had it happen before. A few years ago, I was aiming to build a house where my grandmother's house used to sit. And as we prepared to do so, we contacted Appalachian and says, we'd like to build a house here. And the chimney, the old chimney is still there. We'd like to build a house here. They said, oh, you can't, because we have a 100-foot right-of-way, and that's going to be impeding on that right-of-way. So what I'm really trying to say is that we already have suffered a lot from the right-of-ways that have come through there. And I'm hoping that something can be done this time, you know, by the engineers, whoever, to avoid as much as possible. In fact, I would really like for it to be somewhere, relocated somewhere altogether. But then somebody else will have a problem with that. But certainly, we feel very, very hurt with the prospect of losing the ability to use land that we already own and to lose that much of it. 50-foot wide would be different, but this is 100-foot wide.
Mr. Cousins?
Yes, sir.
Has the power come to Appalachian? Have they contacted you?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
They have contacted you?
Yes, sir.
And have they given you all the restrictions that is going to apply to the land? Have they presented that to you?
They have given some, but I don't think maybe we've gotten them all. But they also have been working with it. They said they were going to continue to look at other options to see if they can work something different out.
Another concern that I have, sir, is what was just told, the constantly increase of the megawatts. Once the power line goes up, we have no control of how many megawatts and the destruction it can do with the spraying that takes place, which the spraying is not very good anymore, we know the chemicals and everything. But there are things that we have no control over once it goes in that will continue for years. And we have no control over those either, because if they constantly increase the megawatts, they'll use that same power line to do that on, that we opposed to begin with. And so it's as if we don't have any choice. This is going to be taken away from us, and it's something that should not be ever taken away from a landowner.
Have they threatened you with imminent domain?
No, sir.
No, we have not. We haven't had that threat.
Yet.
Yet, right.
We are concerned about it, though.
We've been concerned about that.
How are you all doing? Thank you.
Speak up, come on.
I actually remember you all from when I was very young.
Yes.
Good to see you all again.
Good to see you too.
Question, how many, how much acreage do you all have?
66.
Wow. And about how many acres are being directly affected by those lines?
With the new line?
Well, the existing lines, and what will be affecting the new line?
Probably two-thirds of the property.
The first line is up closer to Locust Lane. And then we have two more lanes that are taken up by the power company, and it continues to grow. And we're concerned that before it's over with, you know, the ridge that what they would like to use, which is a good ridge, and if we were going to do developments there, such as putting in, we're thinking about cutting a street and putting houses and selling lots and things like that down that area, we will not be able to do it under these circumstances. So future opportunity for us is ours are getting narrower and narrower as the years go by and different projects come through.
And as the megawatts would increase, that would even do more damage.
Thank you all.
Approximately how many acres will be right-of-way? Will they be taken of your property?
Ms. Jacobs, can you give us that?
I just roughly calculated six acres.
Six acres.
And how many acres do you have total?
66.
66. 10%.
10% of the property with restrictions. When the tax assessors come to your property, do you have, does Appalachian apply you all the restrictions so the assessment cannot say the land is valuable with all these restrictions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Where is your property located up there?
On Locust Lane.
I don't understand exactly where your property is located.
Locust Drive is 854, and it connects with 622 and 850. It used, where we lived, years and years back in the 40s, was actually 58.
Oh, you're fairly close to 58.
Yeah, well, we're really, if you went straight through, across from our house, we're like probably a quarter mile from 58. And we, you know, we just, we don't want to lose the ability to utilize our land. We can't, even if we plant trees or had trees there, they would mow them down. But even if they allowed trees, it couldn't be very high, because it would interfere with electricity.
We would like for you to take back on recommendation and let them go back to the drawing board and come up with a different alternative, that we would not be punished so drastically.
Any other questions? Thank you all.
Yes, sir.
No one else has signed up? Does anyone here wishes to address this case and do not have an opportunity to sign up?
Mr. Chairman, just to clean up, I guess, one thing that they're asking for, the conformance with the comprehensive plan. I handed out something to the members before the meeting, just to explain what that is. The front map here is a future land use map for Pennsylvania County. And the big blue blob over here in the southwestern corner is the Berry Hill property. And you see that blue, and your key is key for industrial. So in your future land use map, this area is earmarked for industrial development. And that's actually a bigger area than the Berry Hill park, because there's property all the way down to the line that was previously already, prior to the Berry Hill park, was already zoned industrial. So that area was recognized as an area that industrial growth would occur and that infrastructure would have to be in place. So that's the reason I attached that. And then the second page, again, just very briefly, goal one is to achieve a balanced land use system that provides sufficient compatible land areas for all community land use needs while protecting natural environments and important local and historic cultural resources. That's the process that we expect AEP to go through when they're trying to cite these lands. Objective one under that goal is to promote a strong and diversified industrial and commercial base, which does not create significant impacts on residential areas, prime agricultural lands, or public facilities. And again, the expectation is we have to serve the park, but we expect AEP to go through a process, as they have, to minimize those impacts as much as possible and then compensate when they can't be minimized. And then I'll just touch on strategy one under that is use the future land use map contained in this plan as a general guide for future commercial and industrial land use decisions. So that would be the evidence for the county's position that it is in conformance, that supplying power to the industrial park is in conformance with comprehensive plan. That's just the broad spectrum. That's, again, is not getting down to a specific impact on a specific property owner. That is AEP, and their right-of-way people, I'm sure would like to say more about that process.
Mr. Sats, when was this approved? I mean, don't we have a hearing, a public hearing on every so often you update? When was this approved?
This was updated in 2015. It was re-adopted by the board, so it would be up for readoption or review or revision in 2020.
Next five years, yep.
We have went through a process of trying to determine where this line could go that would impact the least amount of people overall. We picked this spot to pull off of, which is basically Cousins' property, is where we're pulling off and tapping the existing line. We picked that for a couple of reasons. Number one, it was south of 58. It keeps the visual disturbance of the area where a lot of the traffic is. Another reason was is the City of Danville has a 69-line that crosses their property, and we have to go over top of that line. So we tried to find a place where that line was kind of low. So the poles that we could install to go over top of that line were not really, really tall and really visible from far away. This happens just to be a location where that line is in a low situation, and we can go over with maybe 130-foot pole as opposed to having to have a lot taller pole if we cross closer in to Brazos or other areas.
What kind of clearance you got to have off of this 69-kV?
We have to have 15 feet from the top of the power.
Okay.
What restrictions y'all apply to the landowners?
No structures. You can't have tall vegetation. It has to be maintained low. So it is a hardship. It's a 100-foot right-of-way. But to add on to what Dave was saying, my name is Scott Kendy with American Electric Power. We try to locate these lines sometimes with those engineering constraints that he mentioned, but also the Cousins mentioned that there are existing lines on the property. Sometimes that, we try to put the impacts where there's existing impacts. That's federal and state guidelines. We do feel very bad that we are putting another hardship on their property, but I can tell you that they will be fairly compensated. It's not like a distribution line. So if we take out a production, trees, they will be compensated. And to answer the first gentleman's question, in the summer, we are beginning that process of creating exhibits exactly where our line would be to go out and talk with the landowners and show them. And then surveyors will go out on the property and start staking. But there will be some dialogue there where we can modify the design a little bit.
Do y'all give the commissioner revenue a list of all these restrictions that you're applying to the land?
You mean if, um, the properties were...
So when the assessors come to reassess the property, they know that it is special restrictions on this land? Do y'all hand that to the commissioner revenue, so?
I am not familiar with us doing that, but I would think they would, if they have a formula where if our line is restricting it, that they would take that into account somehow.
I guess, Mr. Sides, he's a choice manager. They hand this to the commissioner revenue, so we won't have like what we had with the homes this past year that being taxed for landfill until there's not even existence?
Uh, I'm not aware of whether they specifically hand the restrictions over to the commissioner revenue, but my understanding is easement would be a recorded instrument, so it would be recorded in the clerk, a court's office and tied to that deed.
With, the restrictions would be attached to the deed?
To that property, yes.
Yes, that's correct. Yes, the deed's recorded because it's transferred onwards. And matter, one other comment Mr. Cousins made, and I'll clarify that, or Mrs. Cousins, that the line will be one thirty-eight, operate at one thirty-eight. It's designed to one thirty-eight. So that hopefully won't change.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I can't guarantee in fifty years we tear it down and build a bigger line. That, that's unlikely in, in anywhere in the near future, though. That would be a major grid improvement because we're tapping a one thirty-eight line, so.
The other thing is too, no matter, she was talking about the number of power lines that are on their property, no matter where we cross somebody's property, where we pull off, they're gonna have the main one thirty-eight that's there now. They're gonna have the new line that we're gonna build, and they're also probably gonna have a distribution line that serves their house exactly like they do. So no matter where we go, we're gonna have that situation that we're gonna have to deal with. They do have another line, the sixty-nine line in the city of Danville that we have to get over on their property.
And, but I, we did talk with the Cousins, and we will look at it further to see if we can do anything else.
Well, that's gonna be my next question.
Yes, I, I, but like I said, there, there's constraints. There's topo, there's the place where we can tap, there's a, there's some creeks on either side, so we're, our flexibility's limited. And as Mr. Cousins indicated, if we went somewhere else, we're, we're gonna probably have another landowner who's upset, upset also. But all, we already looked at other places. We, the first map we had, there was a lot of spaghetti up there. Unfortunately, nobody ever wants a new power line in the backyard. That's, that's always true. But I, I can say we will work with the Cousins more. I can't guarantee that we can get it off them. Our engineers did move it a little more to the west of the property to reduce the, the impact a little bit, but we're still there. It's a hundred-foot right-of-way. There'll be a couple of structures on them, and visually, they'll be seeing some poles that, that you saw there, too.
And that's something you cannot put underground, so you got to have it transmission overhead.
Yeah, it's seven to ten times.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, you can't do it. To put it underground. And we usually save that for extreme situations, like do we have to take three or four houses? We might go underground or something like that. Very rare that we do that. The only last case I had in Virginia where we did that was, we had an airport, we were reducing its ability to fly.
Sure.
We went literally seven to ten times more for a month.
Right, I understand.
Listen, I have a question. The Cousins currently have, you said, four lines on their property. Is that correct?
Well, those are distribution, that city of Danville lines on there.
But anytime you take a perm, you get a permanent easement across a citizen's land, you compensate them for that, right?
Absolutely.
And it's a negotiation process, right?
Absolutely.
And you allow the landowner to hire an attorney to negotiate on their behalf?
Absolutely.
So if the easement goes on their property, there should be a negotiation, there should be a payment. In the event you cannot get to a number, that's when the state government has given you the ability to condemn, but that's a last-case scenario because it's expensive, time-consuming, burdensome. So I just wanted to clear up that you're not taking and restricting land without compensation negotiations.
Fair compensation, absolutely. And I, I was gonna clarify, the distribution lines that are on your property, a lot of times, that's not transmission. We compensate at, at the price of that, this piece of land. Distribution, sometimes they're not gonna pay very much at all because they're serving the houses right there. So don't, I don't wanna get that confused with us.
Exactly. And that is something, that distribution line, I have talked to our engineering folks that are in the distribution, that's something that we could possibly put underground, that line.
And again, that's, we will work with the Cousins further. I, I am, I'm gonna be honest, I'm not optimistic that we can get off the property. I'm not gonna give any false hope there. This is, we, we have gone through a pretty long process and looked at very, various options, and, uh, but we will look at, well, our engineers will look at it closer, I can tell you that. And our right-of-way agents will be contacting the Cousins and working with them for exactly where it will be and fairly compensate them, and I, I felt confident that we'll make some progress on that.
Well, this certainly feels like a case that, that y'all would certainly look at compensation to the, the very maximum that, that you could come up with, because if you're gonna penalize them that much, it looks like to me that they should be really compensated for what they're going through with.
Yes. Yeah, it, it is, this is a nuisance. I, I mean, nobody wants the power line to come in and bother, bother them, and they have to get a lawyer and everything, and, but, um, yes, we will appraise and we will fairly compensate. I can't tell you how much that is at this point, it's a little bit of the process. If they don't agree with the price, you're correct, there's other procedures after that. The courts can decide what the fair price is.
Any other questions?
I understand the process, I fully understand it.
And, and as to follow up on the questions you asked earlier, this is a large investment for the county, this project, significant investment, which will also have annual tax revenues. I can't give you those numbers, but.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
At eight fifty-seven, the public here, Pennsylvania County, is closed. Uh, Mr. Sides, I need your help. I guess we just need a motion as presented, uh...
It's in my territory.
In Mr. Stowe's territory.
Yeah.
That Appalachian power seeking determination from Pennsylvania County pursuant to Virginia Code fifteen dash two dash two-two-three-two at the general and approximate location character and extent of the proposed Berry Hill substation and the associated transmission line tap are subject according to the county adopted comprehensive plan.
That's correct, Ms. Chairman.
I need a motion, Mr., motion for Mr. Stowe's, I'll suck.
Second.
Second, for Ms. Meese, any discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call and roll to the vote?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller, absent. Seven-four.
The public hearing is passed, seven-four, one absent, uh, to the, what, Virginia Code fifteen dash two, is that right, Mr. Stowe?
Yes, sir.
Passed. Thank y'all, gentlemen. Appreciate you asking the questions for us. Uh, old business. Ms. Hayes, Mr. Sides?
I don't have any.
Uh, one thing I'll mention, I guess we could call it old business since it relates to solar, but I attended a workshop seminar up in Harrisonburg back in June that some of the localities in Shindore Valley sponsored a seminar about utility-scale solar projects because they were starting to get a number of projects. And all localities are starting to get a number of projects. There were, even though it was up in Harrisonburg, there were counties from down at Lexington, Rockbridge County, all the way to Southampton, city of Franklin, Chesterfield, around Richmond, and the northern part of Virginia. What I found from that meeting, one thing that I took some comfort from, I guess, is that we are actually ahead of the vast majority of localities by having a, I mean, a solar ordinance.
That's right.
And also in the presentations and the discussions, we have a very strong solar ordinance. When I explained to them a little bit about how we, what we require in the decommissioning bond, what we require in site plans, again, I don't know of anybody that's, that's tighter than that.
That's right.
So everybody is just trying to figure out how to get their hands around this situation, kinda learning from each other, and I think this body and the county is learning as we go. As Mr. Haymore says, we learn what not to do in terms of landscape, and then since then, we've gotten a lot better. And I think we're probably getting a little bit better with each project.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sides, for your guidance, for directing us. We appreciate that. Mr. Haymore, chief.
Mr. Sides, what, how about Halifax County? Have you talked with anybody down there?
I have not talked with them directly, no. When I was putting the ordinance together, I looked at everybody in our area that had ordinances. This was, what, two, a year or so ago.
The, the word I'm getting is a flat no in Halifax County.
Yeah, there are some localities that have taken the no position.
I, I thought maybe you might know the, I mean, what they were, their reason for it, you might have talked with someone down there.
I, I do not, and in the meeting that I was in, there was one in that area, I think Augusta County, that had been turned down.
Right.
Only one that had been turned down, and they had a pretty good reason. You're voting, you know, that these projects are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Well, they had a comprehensive plan that showed an area where utilities had been run for future residential development, and somebody wanted to put a solar project right there. Well, that's not consistent with a comprehensive plan because you've already spent the money running water and sewer for residential. So they voted that one down, but they had good logical grounds for that. They weren't opposed to solar. If they went out in a more rural area, they'd have been fine.
Sure. I, I just thought possibly you had heard what, what Halifax's thoughts were.
Excuse me, I don't see how we can be against it. It's not costing the city one cent.
There was a very good...
I mean, the county is not one to see this costing and getting a tax refund, plus the land is being, coming out of land use back.
That's correct.
It's two taxation.
They require absolutely no county services.
And it's not even a domain. They don't take the property. If a landowner don't want it, it cannot come back. I mean, it's, it's...
That's right.
Farming is gone. They make a living farming. A young man coming out of school wanting to farm today, you gotta have thousands of acres of land, a lot of money to buy equipment, things of that nature, and we have no price to sell the farm.
You know, I, I know, I've, the only, some people has approached me on this, and they're, they're concerned about them tying up farmland for forty years. And, and it's basically, it looks like to me it's been the ones who are leasing a lot of property. That's what, that's the only negative that I've had, is that individuals that are leasing are there thinking that, for example, the Owens were, were renting about three-fourths of what we approved up there. And I know the guy that was renting came pretty upset about it, said, "What am I gonna do with, with my operation if I don't have the land to do it?" That's the only negative comment I've heard.
Go somewhere else, it's planned. If any county is available, you know. I've heard equipment dealers complain.
Yeah.
That's it. New business. Ms. Hayes?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
I have nothing, Ms. Chairman.
At nine oh-three, need a motion for adjournment.
I will make that motion to go home. How about that?